Twenty-five dollar, it could be a twenty-five dollar infraction.
To the business.
We're really hoping not to go that route, Councilman Jackson. But that is an option. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Danny at this time on the ordinance itself? I'm sure we'll be coming back to you, Danny. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to note, and Danny mentioned that there's a process to this. The City of Norfolk through its charter does have a public health board. That public health board met at 11 o'clock this morning to discuss this ordinance and make an official recommendation that it be presented before the Norfolk City Council. That public health board consists of myself as mayor, our council president, Jim Langy, the chief of police, Don Miller, and then designated medical personnel and physicians, in this case, Dr. Lisa Yostin with Faith Regional Health Services, and Kathy Nordby of the Midtown Health Center. So at this point, I want to let those that are on phone conference know that they can participate in the open discussion of this matter. To do so, the participant will need to press number nine on their phones to raise their hands within the system. And if they aren't a computer, they will need to click the raise hand icon on the bottom of their screen. Okay, with that, I think we have a couple special presentations lined up through participants on the phone. And the first, for sake of her time, I believe, is from Kelly Driscoll, who is CEO of Faith Regional Health Services, to give us a status update from our community hospital.
Hello, this is Kelly. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, Kelly.
All right, great. Thanks for having me. So I appreciate the council meeting today to discuss the mandate of a possible mask mandate. I know that Faith Regional Health Services as the only hospital in our community and larger hospital in the Northeast Nebraska community is a part of that discussion for capacity. So what I can tell you is that over, you know, the last several weeks, we've significant increase in COVID-19 hospitalizations, as well as non-COVID hospitalizations, just as the rest of state and rest of the nation has seen as well. While the percentage of hospitalizations fluctuates, you know, at any given time throughout the day, we've been running about eighty-five to sometimes ninety-five percent capacity the last several weeks at any given point in time. The COVID portion of that has ranged anywhere from thirty-five to fifty percent of the total patient capacity at any given point in time. The concern about this is that obviously, you know, it said in the past that hospital resources finite, it is not unlimited. It's more than just having a bed. You need to have staff, you need to have IV pumps, you need to have medications, you need to have oxygen, you need to have all the tools and your Tua belt to be able to care appropriately for those patients. And that is a finite resource that you're not able to get, as every hospital in the country needs those same resources. We also battle with our own staffing concerns, COVID, or other illnesses. And at any given time during the day, we have anywhere from forty to sixty staff off due to illness at any given day. So that is at least snapshots of the last few weeks and what we're seeing here at the hospital. Also, keep in mind, any mitigation efforts that go into effect, let's just say for today, you will not see the benefit of that for about a month. It takes about a month for mitigation efforts when done consistently to see that benefit on the hospitalization side. Any questions for me?
Questions for Kelly while we have her. It doesn't look like it, Kelly. We appreciate you taking the time for that update.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we have next in the queue Melanie Thompson from the Elkhorn Logan Valley Public Health Department.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Melanie.
Thank you. Mayor Mooney and Norfolk City Council, as we have discussed on numerous occasions, both the number of cases and the number of hospitalizations in Norfolk and across the Elkhorn Logan Valley Public Health Department district are rapidly increasing. Our regional hospitals are running very close to capacity, as Kelly just mentioned. Patients who, under normal circumstance, would be cared for in ICUs are being managed in medical surgical units because there are either no beds, or not enough staff in ICUs, or nowhere to transfer them. For the week ending October tenth, 2020, Madison County averaged twenty new cases a day. One month later, for the week ending November seventh, 2020, that average increased to seventy-seven daily new cases, so over three times an increase. And now, just two weeks after that increase, Madison County is averaging ninety-seven daily new cases. We have not calculated that for this week yet, but I can tell you that the numbers that we will be using, we increased by another fifty cases last week. Lately, as Kelly mentioned, thirty-five to fifty percent of the hospitalizations in the Elkhorn Logan Valley Public Health Department district are COVID-19 related on any given date. The number of patients needing hospital care due to complications of COVID-19 has doubled since October twenty-seventh, when there were eighteen COVID-inpatients, to forty COVID-inpatients today across the health district. In Norfolk, we have regularly worked with congregate living facilities such as nursing homes, assisted living facilities, people with disabilities, and the Norfolk regionals. This past month, all but two of the twelve facilities in Madison County that we work with have had staff, residents, or both staff and residents testing positive for COVID-19. Schools in Norfolk have been impacted by COVID illness and exposures, impacted staff and students having to spit out of in-class settings because they have either tested positive for COVID-19 or are close contacts of COVID-19. The use of masks inside the schools during indoor and outdoor events at these schools have minimized exposures within the confines of the school and has allowed them to remain operational during this pandemic. Although schools are going above and beyond to do their part to protect students and staff during the course of the school day, the unmasked informal congregating of students and staff outside of school activities are what cause larger-scale quarantines and absenteeism from school. The increase in cases is also impacting our local emergency services, as we said earlier from Scott, with higher numbers of cases increasing the call volume for Norfolk Fire and Rescue and Norfolk Ambulance, and impacting the number of personnel available to respond to these calls. The COVID-19 risk dial for Madison County is in the red zone, and no reduction is expected with the current trends. This risk dial is based on a number of factors, which include hospital COVID-inpatients, staff-hospital-bed availability, trends in case counts, and public health's ability to investigate cases and perform contract tracing for a huge volume of cases. We are clearly at a critical juncture. If, as a community, we do not act locally and swiftly now, we will continue with uncontrolled spread of COVID-19, increased burden on our healthcare system, and many deaths. According to the Centers for Disease Control, SARS-CoV-2 or COVID-19 infection is transmitted predominantly by respiratory droplets generated when people cough, sneeze, sneeze, cough, or breathe. CDC recommends community use of masks, specifically non-valved, multi-layer cloth masks, to prevent transmission of SARS-CoV-2. Masks work in two ways. First, they reduce the emission of virus-laden droplets, which is especially relevant for asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic infected wearers who feel well and may be unaware of their infectiousness to others, and who are estimated to account for more than fifty percent of transmission. Second, masks help reduce inhalation of these droplets by the wearer. The community benefit of masking for SARS-CoV-2 control is due to the combination of these effects. Individual protection benefit increases with increased numbers of people using masks consistently and correctly. A report issued by the CDC on November tenth states that cloth masks not only effectively block most large droplets, twenty to thirty microns or larger, but they can also block the exhalation of fine droplets and particles, which is also referred to as aerosol, smaller than ten micron, which increase in number with the volume of speech specific types of vocalization. Multi-layered cloth masks can both block up to fifty to seventy percent of these fine droplets and particles and limit the forward spread of those that are not captured. Upwards of eighty percent blockage has been achieved in human experiments that have measured blocking of all respiratory droplets with cloth masks, in some studies performing on par with surgical masks as barriers for source control. The relationship between source control and personal protection is likely complementary and possibly synergistic, so that individual benefit increases with increasing community mask use. Adopting universal masking policies can help avert future lockdowns and closures, especially if combined with other non-pharmaceutical interventions such as social distancing, hand-hiding, and adequate ventilation. Masks are working in this pandemic, and there is evidence close to home. University of Kansas Institute for Policy and Social Research evaluated the effectiveness of mask policies in Kansas counties, finding that counties with mask policies began seeing a decrease in cases about fourteen days after the policy went into effect, followed by an oscillation of increases and decreases, but overall maintained at about twenty average new daily cases per hundred thousand people. By comparison, the counties which did not have universal mask policies continued with a steady increase in cases and had nearly twice as many average new daily cases per hundred thousand than counties with mask policies. Locally, Elkhorn Logan Valley Public Health Department is not seeing a high level of transmission of COVID-19 from positive cases to their close contacts when all individuals are wearing masks, such as in our schools and work sites that have implemented mask policies. The science on the value of universal masking and prevention of the spread of COVID-19 is firm. The need for implementation of non-pharmaceutical prevention tools, including universal masking, is urgent. This call to action requires swift response in order to protect our community health, emergency and safety services, as well as schools, childcare services, long-term care facilities, service organizations, and local workforce. Elkhorn Logan Valley Public Health Department recommends a universal masking policy for the City of Norfolk that coincides with the passage of similar policies in Omaha, Lincoln, Hastings, Kearney, and Grand Island, signed by Gina Ewing, Health Director of Elkhorn Logan Valley Public Health Department. We also have received a letter from Dr. James Lawler, along with a number of other individuals, Christopher Cratchit, who is a physician, John Lowe, who is PhD for the Global Center for Health Security, Shelley Schwedel, who is also with the Global Center for Health Security, Kenneth Bailes, also with the Global Center for Health Security. Dr. Lawler is the Global Center for Health Security, but is also an infectious disease doctor at UNMC. The statement that he gave us states that the cases of coronavirus disease 2019, or COVID-19, remain at dangerously high levels in Nebraska as of November twenty-third, 2020. Communities must take action to suppress transmission to prevent excess deaths and hospitalizations that are stressing our hospitals to their breaking point. The available scientific evidence clearly shows that mask mandates can significantly reduce community transmission of COVID, particularly when they are enacted as part of a broader suite of community non-pharmaceutical interventions. Therefore, ordinances mandating the wearing of face masks outside of one's home are a low-cost, effective tool that can help communities protect vulnerable populations, health system function, and economic vitality. The consensus of infectious disease and public health experts continues to strengthen in support of the efficacy of face masks, including multi-layered cloth masks for reducing community transmission of COVID-19. The CDC has published a scientific brief documenting the role of face masks in COVID-19 transmission, citing forty-five supporting papers and studies. Recently, a team of researchers examined, and this is the same thing with the Kansas counties, so I'm going to skip over that. In conclusion, the public health and infectious disease experts in the Global Center for Health Security at the University of Nebraska Medical Center agree that mandatory universal face mask use is an effective tool for reducing community transmission of COVID-19. Mask mandates should be used in a layered combination of community non-pharmaceutical interventions in order to create the largest reduction in COVID-19 cases. And then they all sign the letter. If you want to share my screen now, I can show you a comparison of what we're seeing in our health district to Douglas County and Lincoln Lancaster County. Okay, can you see that?
Yes. Yes, we can. Melanie, you still with us?
I am. Can you see my screen?
We can, yes.
Okay, all right. So what you're seeing is the Douglas County case count. And they have marked different spots in there, the long lines, they're probably hard to be deceived. But the first line is when the phase-three directed health measures were enacted there in the, at the end of June. The next one, that you see the long line there, is the Omaha mask mandate. Then the next line is when schools returned. And you can see that there was a jump in the cases, but then it jumped back down. And then the phase-four directed health measure, when those were relaxed, that's when we see the climb in their cases, and this is for Douglas County. And then the last vertical line there is when some of the phase-four directive health measures were changed again. So that has not been in effect for very long, but you can see that that has dropped. And maybe it would be better if I do this. Didn't really help, did it? Okay, so this next one is Lincoln Lancaster. So they have also gotten a mask mandate. So you can see the different dates there. Along the top, the first vertical line is Easter, back on April twelfth. You can see that the numbers were very low. The next line is Memorial Day. The little orange vertical columns that are kind of highlighted just show the time after any holiday. They wanted to show that and see what kind of cases they had. The next vertical line indicates the Fourth of July. And then you can see the little blue sign with the blue vertical line. That is when their directed health measure with mask-wearing was implemented on July twentieth. On August fourteenth, you can see when UNL resumed. And one of the things that we have to remember is that you had an influx of students coming back into the community. And if they were, well, just like if I were to go and fly to San Francisco today, when I landed, I wouldn't know what their local mandates were. And I think that, you know, getting students to abide by mask mandates, you know, would take a little while. So, you know, we, they believe that that's probably why you saw the rise. And it kind of held steady, but again, coinciding with the relaxation of directed health measures and people getting together, you see that rise in cases. This one is a little more blurry. I could not get it more clear, but this is ours. This is our health district. You can see that big, you know, blip at the beginning as we started. And then, you know, throughout the summer, we did pretty well. We were outside, we were not, you know, together, we were trying to do the right thing. Then you can see when schools opened, you know, and the end of summer, how that climbed up a little bit. And then when we enacted the phase-four directed health measures, where things were loosened again, and people move indoors, you can definitely see the rise in cases that we had in our health district. So what I did is I, for this, I wanted you to see what the three different graphs together kind of look like. So you have Douglas County in the upper left, Lincoln Lancaster down below, and then you have ours off to the right and slightly larger. So you can see that our climb is very similar to the other climbs, others that are climbing. But what that does not show you is the scale per hundred thousand, because these are all actual numbers. What you need to know is that Douglas County Health District right now has a hundred and ten cases per hundred thousand people every day. Right now, Madison County is sitting at a hundred and sixty-three cases per a hundred thousand people per day. This is not an area that we want to be number one in the state. And that is one of the reasons that we think that a mask mandate for the City of Norfolk would be very beneficial to help drive these cases down until we can get an effective vaccine. We do not need to stress our healthcare system out anymore. And as Kelly mentioned, you've got a two-week lag period. So the cases that we're seeing, where I said, you know, we've got at least another fifty cases from when we do our analysis week to week, you know, those fifty cases translate to more people in the hospitals at Faith Regional and other area hospitals as well. So I really think that now is the time that we need to do the mask mandate.
Thank you, Melanie. Any questions for Melanie from the council? Melanie, that last stat's important to me because, yes, we're seeing an increase in places all over our region of the country, but in the places like Omaha and Lancaster County that have had requirements in place, that new case rate per capita is lower than it is in places without the requirement. Is that accurate? I believe that Lancaster number is even lower than the Douglas number that you posted, correct?
Yeah, it is. And as a matter of fact, even actual numbers, I think it was last week, I was on a call with Lincoln Lancaster, and they reported that they had like ninety-nine cases that day, and we had a hundred and nineteen. Now, that's not just for Madison County, that's our whole health district that particular day. But I was like, how can our little fifty-seven thousand people across our whole health district have more overall cases, not per hundred thousand, overall cases than Lincoln Lancaster? It was, it was kind of a sobering day.
Yeah, that's striking. Okay. Thank you, Melanie. And again, as you mentioned, this is about capacity, protecting capacity at our hospital system. Anyone, Melanie, any other questions from the council for Melanie? Okay. Is there anyone else lined up in the queue for the phone? Okay. Let's, let's go there, and then we'll go to anyone in the room. It looks like it's Paul.
So can, like, people can ask a question of Melanie, or just you guys?
The council, the process will be that input will be taken, but in the room, you must come forward to the podium.
So you can ask a question?
No. The councils are, the questions are directed to the council, not the people testifying. That's not how the, that's not how the procedure works, no. Okay. Okay, Paul? Can you hear us? You're on, Paul. Okay, I don't think it's working for Paul. We might have to come back. At this point, we will open it up to any comment within the council chambers, anyone wishing to come forward.
My name is Mike Marino. I'm a Lutheran minister. I'm speaking for myself and not for my congregation. I speak for myself only. A fellow pretty much knows where he stands in Nebraska. Folks here are hardworking and ready to lend a hand. Neighbors who have an accident and can't finish his harvest, there's a lot of combines on the road. We help folks in need. Accidents happen. You'll see Husker shirts around the block to give blood. Someone's sick and they can't cook for their family? We got you covered. We help our neighbors around here. The flood last year threatened our very town. We came together and took care of our neighbors. Someone gets sick, has a hard time paying bills? We'll get a benefit together, and we're going to step up. Now, our local officials have asked us to help again. Not folks from Washington, not folks from Lincoln, folks from our town. Folks from Faith Regional Health Services. That's the same folks you go to take your kids if they get hurt. You trust them. If, God forbid, you or your loved one gets in a car wreck, you run to the ER, and you trust your doctors and nurses to provide life-saving care for your loved ones. You trust them. Josh is our mayor. We elected him. We know him. He's not perfect in every way, but he's doing a good job taking care of our city. We trust him. We know the folks in the council the same way. We may differ from time to time, but we know that each person who's elected wants to do the best they can to serve our community. They're doing everything they know how to keep our city safe, to keep our businesses open. They're asking for help. Norfolk, the question is up to you. Will you choose to help? Now, a fellow I worked for one time said, "Love your neighbor as yourself." That puts neighbor in a pretty special category. There was a fellow a lot of us grew up in that said, he wore a red sweater, by the way, he said, "Won't you be my neighbor?" Now it's time to step up and to help when it's asked.
Thank you, Pastor Marino.
Good afternoon. Denise Wilkinson, President and CEO of the Norfolk Area Chamber. I would like to read a statement from our Norfolk Area Chamber Board of Directors. 2020 has been nothing if not challenging in every aspect of this life as we knew it. As a business community, we have seen these challenges create the need for creative, innovative change to keep local businesses alive. Many have lost employment, while others have had to recreate their business climate and acumen to adjust to alternate work schedules, balancing work and home life with virtual learning for children, and a greater dependence on business opportunities over the web. Offering home delivery, curbside service, availability by appointment, and competing with larger internet-based retailers have proven to be unique and difficult challenges. The Norfolk Area Chamber of Congress has a long and proud history of supporting their local business in many ways, and we remain one hundred and ten percent committed to that continued business success in our communities as they respond to the challenges we faced. We've learned, as all of you, that we have to do everything and anything we can to ensure the safety of our employers, our employees, and our customers, because without them, we'd certainly be looking at a tougher picture than the one before us today. Furthermore, we need to be mindful of doing all we can to remove the overwhelming burden, whenever possible, for the medical resources we are so lucky to have that support our communities. We have to accept and support whatever measures that have proven success in flattening the curve, reducing the number of cases, and saving lives. In that light, the Norfolk Area Chamber is in full support of the citywide masking requirement being considered by the Norfolk City Council. Masks are our first and foremost line of defense in slowing the spread of COVID. There is no doubt in any of our minds that masks are cumbersome, uncomfortable, and inconvenient. But what if, just maybe, we endured this together as a unified city, determined to stop the spread, and we succeeded? What if a life was spared because although we grumbled, we joined willingly and wore our masks to turn the tide? We want to see our businesses stay open. In the present environment, we see masks as a way to help avoid any government-enforced shutdown of any business. Together, we can make a difference. And this is signed by every member. And this is signed by every member of the Board of Directors. Would you like a copy?
Sure, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Any questions for Denise? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward?
Is this available to anybody?
Yes.
All right. I'll go. Hi, folks. Nice to see you all here today.
Afternoon.
It's kind of weird being up here. Anyways, my name is Cash Luer. I'm a senior at Norfolk Senior High School. I wrote this speech up during fourth period today, figured it needed to be said. And do you mind if I take the mask off or do I have to keep it on?
For purposes speaking, yes, go ahead.
To take it off?
There might be a form to sign there, too. I think everyone's supposed to sign in.
There's only one name on here.
Okay. All right. Well, if you don't mind, please.
All right. Excellent. I can begin?
Yep. Florence yours, Cash.
All right. I believe that being straight up and honest, it's a very important quality in life, always, and even more so during this time of the pandemic. And that's the way I've decided to conduct this speech. Now, I believe that if people truly want to stay safe from the virus, they can either stay in their houses or engage in some self-responsibility measures by exercising their own forms of caution. Now, truthfully, my own autonomy over my, over my body shouldn't be infringed because of other people's perceived or actual problems regarding infection from the virus. This virus, it's temporary, folks, and we're much better served by letting this all work itself out with a combination of vaccinations and herd immunity. Quite simply, we're all capable of coexisting freely within the confines of the community of Norfolk. Now, I will go on record by saying, I lost a grandparent during all of this, and I didn't get to spend any time with him when he was dying in the hospital. But you've got to stand for something or you'll fall for anything. Mask mandates, such as the proposed one today, it ruins the morale of our citizens and creates discontent with our government institutions. Personally, I rarely ever wear a mask, okay? I think that choice should be left up to me and only me, and the only time I've ever worn one is for social pressures like I've worn today, or when my school forced me to wear one, and when private businesses forced me to wear one. I'll wear it when they tell me to. There's no griping there. And, you know, the people who don't wear a mask, or anybody, when you choose to come into contact other people, mask or no mask, you know the risks that you're taking and you know that you're potentially taking a gamble with your life. And, you know, in the end, some people may die, but it is what it is, folks. It's the risk they take. We're capable of upholding our personal freedoms instead of having to sacrifice them in the name of so-called public health. Now, regarding the $25 fine, I believe that many constituents, including myself, see a municipal fine as just another desperate attempt to collect more funds from our citizens. It's simply just another tax. Let's call it for what it is. That's all it is. Members of the council, today, your leadership, it's going to be tested and people will remember how you voted today. The consequences may even result in whether or not you have a position on the council. Elections have consequences. Today, you have the opportunity to create a proper precedent for dealing with the public health crisis. Are you going to crack under the social pressures of today by implementing a mask mandate? Or are you going to uphold personal freedoms for now and for the future by allowing constituents to be in control of their own livelihoods? Do the right thing. Allow us to retain our normal lives and vote against the mask mandate. And I would like to add that there have been reports of governors and state and city officials getting caught with not wearing their masks in public. If you end up passing the mask mandate today and we catch you not wearing masks, we're going to have to hold you accountable, okay? All I ask is don't preach what you cannot practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Cash. Any questions for Cash? Hey, Cash, thank you. I got a question. First, I appreciate, Cash, I've got a question for you. I appreciate you taking the time and that was well presented.
Thank you.
Are you on the speech team?
I'm in debate.
Debate team?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So you mentioned your school district does require you to wear masks while you're in the school?
Yes, current, actually. Yes, currently, they do.
Okay. Has your school experienced any significant outbreaks of COVID-19?
I, I'm not aware of the specific number. I'm not going to speculate on it. I'm guessing it's been increasing. It's been increasing everywhere. But what I found disheartening was on the first day of school, we had a presentation. They were all saying, "We respect your constitutional right not to wear a mask. We're not going to step in until the level gets to orange." Two days later, come back on Monday, they say, "Ah, no, scratch that. No, we didn't really mean that. No, we just, we changed it at the next board meeting." I, I feel like there is, I don't feel like it was extremely genuine in what they were saying in the beginning. It was really flip-floppy.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I know there was a healthy amount of public discussion on what the school district would do in order to keep people safe throughout the school season and to keep schools open, right? And so that decision was made by those elected official, officials, the school board members and the administrators in order to keep our schools open, which is important, important point here, too. We want to keep our businesses open as long as possible because as I've stated, if we don't get a handle on these numbers, we will certainly see another round of mandated business shutdowns and restrictions.
And see, I think it's wrong in either case for the government to step in and require business owners to do those measures. I think the debate here is personal freedom versus public health. I think we can coexist in an environment where we respect both right now. Like I pointed out in my speech, are we going to crack under the social pressures of now? Or are we going to look towards the long term and say, "It wasn't really worth doing this?" If you remember the government bailouts from 2008, when we bailed out the auto industry, we had people saying, "Oh, we got to do this. We got to do this. It's a big thing now." But now everybody almost unanimously agrees, "Yeah, it was a mistake. We didn't have very good foresight on that." I, I think we have to be looking towards the long term, not just the present. Infections may be bad now, they're going to spike, fluctuates, it happens. And in no way disregarding science, I know at the beginning you said, "We want to focus on science." And you're right, the numbers exist, they are there, but I think we have to stay in this environment where we're able to coexist and respect everybody. All points of view.
Appreciate it.
And I think we, I think we can.
And we wanted to focus this on being data-driven, and one of those key points is our hospitals at capacity. So I'm not sure what you would tell the healthcare workers or a hospital administrator who's saying, "We need help because we're full." And not just full of COVID patients, but also those people have heart attacks and need emergency medical services. What do you tell them when the hospital's full?
I don't know exactly.
We don't all have the luxury of our only experience with COVID being political or philosophical or theoretical because for many Nebraskans right now, it's physical.
Oh, I know.
And there, and there are, there are people on breathing machines.
I understand.
It's physical. It's not philosophical.
I, I think that, I stand by my judgment because I have people who are close to me. Colin Glazer's sitting in the audience right there. His dad had it just the other day. He had to take 14 days off, off of school. We, everybody in this room knows somebody who's got it. It's, it's become close to home, but I think we have to stay in this mindset where we have to have the proper foresight for the future. The numbers are going to fluctuate. It's, it's a reality. The numbers are real. I understand.
Unfortunately, the numbers have not been fluctuating here recently. They've just been increasing and they're not stopping, which is why we're here discussing this. So, we, thank you. Appreciate your coming.
Hey, Cash. One thing I'd like to say is, I'd rather go today and make a choice on this and look back and say, "Boy, I was wrong. I should, maybe I shouldn't have passed that," than look back and say, "Man, I wish I would have." You know, and you talk about people being close to you, knowing, we lost a man last night in my family. Good friend of the family, Jack Putters, he passed away last night. A businessperson here in town for a long time. There's a lot of people laid in the hospital today that had they been in a situation where their masks had been worn, they probably wouldn't, probably wouldn't be there. You can say masks don't work, but for every story you show me, I'll show you one that says they do. I have medical professionals today that have spoke that says it does. And so I think that going forward, we need to look at this in depth and take it seriously.
Are you proposing that I'm not taking it seriously? Because I think, I think it's something to be taken seriously. I just don't know if this fine for non-compliance is the issue that we need to go the direction.
Well, you know, you can say that, and we've, for a long, for the whole time along here now, we said, "Please wear masks. Please wears masks." And nobody's doing it. That's why the numbers are spiking.
Again, the debate lies, personal freedom versus public health.
What freedom are you losing?
I feel like, well, I, the freedom to go outside and not wear a mask. I mean, even, even what I'm doing.
You can be outside.
You don't have to have a mask on when you are outside. You're not losing a freedom.
Well, I, you're infringing on business owners to choose the practices.
We've had business owners asking us to enforce this.
Well, I feel like every business has autonomy over their, what they do within the confines of their business.
You heard the statement from the Chamber of Commerce just now, right?
Yeah, they, I understand that they got their required number of signatures. Or, it's the signatures they got, sorry. I, I feel like I'm making a compelling point here, and I believe that there are other people in the audience who share my same dissatisfaction. So all I ask is for us to look at all point of views before we move forward, and I, I think that's something all of you try to do.
Sure. And we admire your willingness coming forward with your opinion and, and your respect for freedoms and liberties. But as elected officials, we do have to balance decisions based on well-being of the community. And last March, when floodwaters were threatening to consume about a third of our community, we had to make a decision to evacuate people from their homes, order evacuations, people from their homes. Now, I suppose there were arguments that could have been made at that time that you can't tell me what to do and that individuals should have been able to make their own decision then, but we had to make the call that we saw fit to protect the health and well-being of the community, of the community in that moment of time.
And there are different perspectives of governing, governing. I completely understand that. I just hope that you can take in all sides before you move forward. It's a very big issue today. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't a big issue.
Appreciate your time and opinion.
And I appreciate yours as well. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward to make comment?
There is one person.
Okay. Okay, yeah, come. We'll get to the person on the phone next.
So I need to sign this?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay. I'm a wife, I'm a mom, I'm a business owner, we have 67 employees. I think it would be horribly wrong for you to impose a fine of $25. I think you can strongly encourage people to wear masks. I just found out that a friend's been diagnosed with COVID-19 and she's asymptomatic. However, she's one of the most hand-washing people, mask-wearing people that I know. And I just, I don't think that this is the answer. And when the flu comes, it spikes and then it goes down. I honestly think that it's just going to spike. And yes, people may die. But if we don't take risks in life, if we don't go out and live, that's just ridiculous. I would just strongly encourage you not to go down this road. Let everybody make their own decisions, make, let everybody have their own personal freedoms and decide for themselves. If somebody feels unsafe, they can wear a mask. And then, isn't that awesome? But if somebody feels like they don't need one, then I think that that would be good too. So, as a wife, business owner, mother, friend, I just, people need to be able to make their own decisions and not be shamed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Okay. Do we still have someone on the phone?
Yes.
Laura, okay, I see Laura. Laura, are you on?
Got unmute.
We'd ask you to unmute yourself, please. Laura, can you hear us? You're on mute. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, let's see. I think we have an instruction here. If you're just on the phone.
She's actually on the computer.
She's on the computer? Okay. So those, for those who are on the phone, if you, to unmute, you press pound six, but Laura's on the computer, okay? Okay, all right. Anyone else in the room who would like to come forward to speak?
My name is Brian Hoover. And just to inform some statistics that you may not know. So my wife and I, we tested positive for COVID a couple, three, four weeks ago, and very mild conditions, we're fine. We have five kids. With that, we were on the phone with the health department, talked to them about it when they can go back to school, and they asked about, you know, did they have symptoms? They had a fever spike. Great, they have COVID, you have 10 days from when that fever spike is. They're a statistic now. They never were tested, they're a statistic. So I suppose when you look at the statistics and the ratio of COVID, consider that. All of these spikes, a lot of them are kids and they don't get tested. Just something to think about. And I think about the freedoms that we have, and I overheard Faith Regional, they're at 85, sometime 95% capacity, but only 30 to 35% is what I heard was COVID-related. So take that into consideration as well. I know a lot going on and stuff like that, but I just think freedoms, we should have that freedom to choose. I know a lot of people that are wearing masks and doing great things. I was wearing a mask, still got COVID. It's going to happen. We're all going to get it sometime. And I know we want to, you know, make the curve go down. I understand that. But to impose this and take away our freedoms individually and to fine us for it, I think is the wrong way of going about it. I'm a firm believer, I got COVID in February last year, February, March last year. If you look at the statistics of people getting sick that last year, there is a huge, huge spike in Norfolk. But it was before COVID ever came out. I think we're hitting our second round. Just to say, that's all I got.
Thank you, Brian.
Mayor, morning. This is Melanie Thompson. May I address one of the, the top, the points that he's about?
Yes, Melanie, Melanie, go ahead.
So the numbers that we report, that I have on my graph, that we report to the public, were our only confirmed cases. So for example, if one person in a family tests positive, we from the public health standpoint believe that if other people in the family are symptomatic, they can go get tested if they want, but we can assume that they're positive so that they don't have the hassle of going to a doctor or whatever. However, the number that would be reflected in the numbers that I gave you today, the numbers that you see on our dashboards, the numbers that are reported is one. The ones that are presumed positive are never reported to the public. So that is just, you know, to clarify that point.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie.
Can I respond to that?
It, well, I've got it. Come forward, please.
So I specifically asked the health department if my kids would be included in the statistics, and they said yes.
So I am the emergency response coordinator at the health department, and I can guarantee that they have not been included. I'm actually the one, one that goes through the numbers. If they have not been in our electronic record, and the only way that they get into the electronic record is if they have had a confirmatory test, either by PCR, which is what is, is what. is if they have had a confirmatory test, either by PCR, which is what is Test Nebraska or through your doctor. It can also be done through, now, nursing homes have some machines. Those are also in the electronic record. So, if they're in the electronic record as positive, they're the ones that are recorded. The ones that are, you know, the rest of the family or somebody has a sniffle but they don't go to the doctor, they are not recorded as positive cases. They are not included in the data that is reported like that. However, you know, if, if you were to call me and say, hey, as the mom, as the dad, I was positive, now, you know, my kids have these symptoms, I'm gonna say, okay, well, they need to sit out for ten days from the onset of their symptoms, but I'm never gonna put those in our dashboard. Those are never going to be public-facing, so to speak. The only ones that are reported on our dashboard, the only ones that are reported out to the public, and this is across the state, are the ones that have been confirmed positive with, with an actual test.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi.
Afternoon.
I'm Michelle Sanchez, I live in Norfolk, Nebraska. And I work at a long-term healthcare facility here at Madison County. We've been mandated to wear masks since the beginning of March. We first started wearing these kind of masks because we didn't have, because the whole United States was having these ma, all masks. Then we go to the N-95 masks that only cover ninety-five percent of the germs that they breathe out. And so, here's another one that we use. So, because right now, this is, these are out, these are in. And we can no longer wear these masks. So, we've been wearing masks at work for nine months. Our residents have been locked in their rooms, not having social contact with their families. And then, all of a sudden, we have agency, house with people come in and then we get bombarded with COVID-19. We are down to thirty-two residents and all of them have recor, not all of them have recovered. We have two hallways that are now turned green that they have survived. We've had sent residents to the hospital with them being just returned to be left to die because they know they're gonna die. We go out to the public, me and my husband, my husband works at the Meat Packing House and they've had their dividers up everywhere you go. Tyson's doing the best that they can. My husband got COVID-19, he got it worse than I did. I had the symptoms, I stayed home my ten days like I was supposed to and was able to return back to work. And when, before all this happened, I never wore a mask and I still do not like the idea of wearing a mask and I don't believe that my government should be telling me to wear a mask. And I don't support the vaccines that are coming out because they're gonna have fetus tissue in there and that's gonna jeopardize our bodies and I don't agree with that one hundred percent. But I am totally against wearing because the CDC and the AMCS is supposed to be helping our residents, but keeping them locked in their rooms and not going out to have dinner and socialization is completely wrong. It's against their own policies where they're supposed to be protecting the residents from isolations. They still got COVID-19. What are they gonna do to protect the residents? And we're getting tested twice a week. But now, once you get COVID-19, even with the C, the CDC, you don't have to get tested for another three months. And right now, what is the season? From October first to March first is flu season. Where are some of the numbers, they're adding the COVID-19 in there? Do we know? Does anybody know?
This is Melanie again from the Health Department. And I can tell you that the flu numbers, the influenza numbers are not included with the COVID numbers.
So, what's the spikes going up from then too? Because you gotta also realize that that time, this is a season and you're breathing in your own oxygen and your CO2 that's gonna make your breathing more difficult. You're breathing and jeopardizing your own lungs wearing these masks. Has anybody ever thought about that? You're sitting in there, you're, you're coughing and you're breathing that cough right back into your lungs. Do you not think sometime sooner or later, you're gonna get sick?
Ma'am, if you wanna know, know something a lot of people in town don't know? I have non-specific respiratory pneumonia. I've had it for ten years. My lungs get harder every day. So therefore, yeah, I do have the cough, but it's from that.
But yes, but do you also realize it's also still jeopardizing, you're keeping that in there?
I'm not.
Okay, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try to focus this to respect everyone's time.
I am against the mask mandates and the fines, is I think was the same thing like the guy said, that it's just to help our, our pockets.
Thank you, Michelle. I, there is a form that you need to sign in there?
Yeah, I did sign in.
Okay, all right. Do we have anybody on the phone? Okay, Tony. Tony, if you're ready to talk, please press star six on your phone.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I strongly disagree with the mandate of the mask for several reasons. Can you hear me?
You're, you're breaking up a little bit. Try again.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I strongly disagree with the mandate of the mask for several reasons. Mandating masks is a violation of our civil rights, doing so may violate legal action. These people cannot wear masks due to medical reasons. And the medical reasons are confidential and need to be divulged by reason of the HIPAA law. And according to the Nebraska Civil Rights Act twenty-one thirty-four, a mask mandate is discriminatory as it's illegal for any business that serves the public eye asset to somebody that's with a medical condition. Number two, there's no scientific evidence that demonstrates masks can stop the spread of COVID-19. In fact, the data from the CDC demonstrates a higher incidence of COVID-19 among people who wear masks always at seventy-point-sixty-six percent versus everywhere at three-point-nine percent. Number three, according to the press conference with the South Dakota governor, Wisconsin has had a mask mandate since August. And their COVID-19 cases are spreading at higher rates than South Dakota, which doesn't have a mask mandate. Montana has a mask mandate since July and their COVID-19 rates have increased also. Wyoming has the fastest spread of COVID-19 in the nation. And Utah stayed open while next door Colorado shut down. And Utah has the half, half the corvability rate of, and three-fourths of the unemployment rate in Colorado. It's, the mask mandates and mandates and restrictions haven't worked to eradicate COVID-19. Number four, COVID-19 has a ninety-nine-point-nine-two percent recovery rate for those seventy percent younger. Over seventy years, it's ninety-six recovery rate. And forty percent of the people diagnosed with COVID-19 are asymptomatic. Number five, it is well-known and documented that the testing of COVID-19 is severely flawed and many times produce false positives. How can we trust anyone to know what's really going on? Or, on, even, even experts don't have it right. I mean, if the health professionals and the city leaders are really concerned about our health, why not mandate clean eating, nutritional supplements and exercising and mandate reduction in eating high-fat and high-sugar foods? Figure out smoking and drinking alcohol beverages, I'm sure that would go over well too. The products and activities and actions that have solid, verifiable science that would support beneficial mandates with positive, good health results guaranteed. More common sense and no restrictions. We don't need any more government control in our lives. I do not want anybody telling me to wear a mask, prevent me from getting sick because for me, it would do the opposite. Also, it may traumatize people who have been sexually or physically assaulted, have anxiety disorder, et cetera. North Park is already struggling with businesses closing and if a mask mandate is placed in its back and you can't go and place a business, I will not be going into town to shop because I'd be going out of town. And I'm sure many other people would do so the same because, you know, that's infringing on our freedom to be able to go in store when you can't even wear a mask. Even since Menards, their mask store, I have not shopped there. So, mask mandates are wrong and fines are unacceptable. Please do not allow the citywide mask mandate to cause more not, animosity between the citizens or to cripple our city, state, or nation anymore. I knew a couple that, in their seventies, that caught COVID-19 but they didn't have any symptoms. But they got tested and they both wore their masks religiously, washed their hands, they even drove up to the groceries and they still got it. So, obviously, it, it doesn't help it. So, I strongly disagree with this restriction and restrictions on civil liberty.
Okay, thank you, Tony. The council also has a copy of the email that you sent to us, which included many of the same points.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There's a couple people in queue on the phone, is there anyone else in the room that would like to come forward? Okay, yes, sir.
Hi, my name is John Hobbs. Really, I kinda wasn't gonna say anything actually, because.
John, if we could have you sign the form in right, please.
Um, because it seems that many people here probably have their mind made up and they're using data that they've gotten and I understand that. But the, the high schooler back there pushed me up here, I think, because if he's got the guts to come up here and say something. Just some of the things that have been said, you know, the different rates in different places, that it's, sometimes it's comparing apples and oranges, you know? When New York was high at the very beginning of this and we were really low and, and then their rate went down a little bit and, and our rate went up. And even county to county and city to city, those rates can change. And that's understandable, there's geographic things, there's population things, there's, there's, there's different, different rates. But the mayor talked about, about data and that's just, I'm just, was gonna point out a couple of things. One, when those graphs were being shown, the Health Department, Mrs. Thompson, I believe her name is, was showing the graphs, I think one thing that could, could be said for certain is, is we're the point where the mask mandate was put into place and now the rates are way higher. It didn't matter that a mask mandate was passed, the rates are way higher now. Omaha passed theirs on August twelfth. It doesn't seem like it's really affected their rates significantly at all. Their rates have went up just like our rates have went up, whether we have a mask mandate or not. I'd say, and, and you guys all could just, you know, think about your own examples, but when I'm out in the community, when I'm at Walmart or when I'm at Hy-Vee, I'd estimate, depending on the time, depending on the occurrence, we're at a seventy to ninety percent compliance right now with masks. And it, the rates are still going up, they're not lower than they were in, say, June when maybe only fifty percent of people were in masks. So, while there's definite proof that testing rates and positive rates went up and certainly that the hospitals are, have a higher percentage of people in the hospitals, that's, that's for certain, but to say whether masks have any effect on that, we don't know. And one of the things, you know, when we reach out for data, we need to reach out for data that isn't maybe affected, isn't twisted. And one of the things I found, as I looked for a little bit of data, I'm, I'm not always a hundred percent right, but this was a study, it was, it was from twenty-ten. And it's kinda interesting though that this study was done for this exact reason. It was done in case of a flu pandemic and that there wouldn't be enough masks to go around. And so, they wanted to test the effectiveness of, of cloth masks. And I know, I believe it was Ms. Thompson again that brought up some stuff and she was talking about particle sizes and if it's effective at this particle size and, and that particle size. And there's a lot of numbers in this study, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna mention two things from it. Aerosol penetrations for cloth masks, okay? And this was done, let's say aerosol penetration, the amount of aerosols that get through a cloth mask was between seventy-four and ninety percent, okay? And they tested, they tested sweatshirts, they tested t-shirts, they tested actually designed cloth masks, they tested bandanas, they've got a whole list of things. But on average, it was between seventy and ninety percent of aerosols got through those cloth masks. And N-95 mask was point-one-two percent. So, masks definitely do work if we're talking about hospital-grade masks. That's why there is things like, I, I think in the story of the fire department, tho, those individuals haven't been affected despite their contact with COVID patients, but they're probably using hospital-grade masks. We're not, we're asking the public to wear masks like this or even lesser. I mean, people that see bandanas or the ones that go around the mouth, that the fabric is so porous as to, to, to barely be a barrier at all. And then, if you look at the population, a lot of people don't wear them properly and at that point, what difference does it make? So, that's the one point. And then, the second point I wanted to bring out from the study and I underlined it here, but, so these household materials are not designed for respiratory protection and their use may provide a false sense of protection because of their effectiveness against larger viruses. It talks about particle size is not well-understood. So, I think that that is something that the council needs to consider when passing this is, are we gonna give a false sense of security? People that think, oh, I'll be okay now and go out when they shouldn't go out because as other statistics that were mentioned, there is, it's a pretty small percentage of this population that has a, an extreme vulnerability to this disease. Most people, a large, large, large percentage of people will, will recover, whatever their symptoms may be, but, but there are some and it's, you know, it's a bad thing anytime anybody gets ill. There are some people that are very susceptible to this and I wouldn't want this mask mandate and the, the way it's being billed is, is protecting people when I think other cities and other municipalities show that it doesn't slow down the rate, is to give them a false sense of security. The other things that I wanted to mention is, one, I, I do agree with the speakers who have said that we should have some, some choice in the way we represent ourselves in the way. A population can go out and live some degree. I worry about where this would, this would stop. I mean, a, a year ago or two years ago, people would laugh to think that this topic was even being brought up. They were, government's gonna force you to wear a mask like this. And, and I do worry about where, where it goes after that. If there is a vaccine or we have to wear something that identifies us as having a vaccine. And I'm, I'm not trying to go on some crazy conspiracy theory, but just where does this stop? There needs to be, there, there's, there's a ability of government to control your life and not. I was gonna disagree with the, the statement about, about this being a tax or a revenue generation mechanism. I don't think that the city wants it to be a revenue generation mechanism and I don't think it would be. It probably would cost the city many times more for every one ticket that was issued than it would be. But what it is intended to be, it's intended to be a punishment towards a person. It's, the city is strong-arming people into complying with this. And I think that for the city to be able to do that, it needs to show a very clear and compelling argument for that and, and I just don't know if it's here. There's certainly a perilous time, the hospitals and, and the disease, but I don't know if we can show that forcing masks upon people can do that. And I just had the last point and I'll give you your time back. But something like, what, what limit are we gonna go to? If we would say in the city of Norfolk, if we would reduce the speed limit by ten miles an hour on every single street, we'd drop it all the way down. You know, in some places, it'd go from forty-five to thirty-five and some places it'd go from twenty-five to fifteen, even from, from ten to twenty. If we did that, it would absolutely reduce property damage, it would absolutely reduce injuries. It would save lives, it would reduce our emergency services. It'd reduce the amount of police officers and the amount of fire personnel that have to respond to those things. But it's not something we do, we balance life with the, the situation, with safety, I guess. And, and I think that we really need to, to consider that in this situation as well, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you, John. So, there's, there's two people left in queue on the phone. One is Laura, I don't know if we figured out, Laura, Laura, are you there? The other one, if Laura's not there, the other one is a number starting with six-four-four. You're the only other person that queue. If you still wish to speak, press star six on your phone to unmute, please.
Yeah, this is Steve, can you hear me?
Yes, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just another concerned citizen, like other folks that have spoken. I am on the bandwagon of, you know, government doesn't need to tell me what to do. When it comes to masks, I firmly believe that the folks that are afraid of the virus, that they have immune deficiencies or whatnot, where they cannot get sick, then those folks are the ones that should by right be wearing the mask. Everybody else, that is up to them. As far as, there's the one rule, and there, I think it was a different city, like Lincoln, I do believe in, posed it where you can walk into a restaurant, you have to have your mask on or as soon as you sit down, you were not required to wear that mask. I do not see the common sense in that. And then the other question I had was, with the COVID-19 cases in Madison County, is there a breakdown where it shows where the cities, you know, the case count per city? And I'll hang up and I'll listen in.
So this is Melanie Thompson from the Health Department. We have followed what a lot of health districts have done, where they don't share the information by zip code or by city. And the reason for that is that there is still a lot of COVID shaming going on. So even though you didn't go out and have sex with an illegal prostitute to get COVID, mind you, if you do get COVID, we have heard from numerous people that they're being kind of shamed by people that they caught COVID, when in fact, this is, this is an airborne disease. You can catch it, and it's very, very infectious, so it's very easy to catch. So the reason that we did that is because we had seen a trend at the beginning of this where certain individuals wanted that information so that they could mark the homes of people who had positive cases inside of their house. And we were seeing that across the nation. But, you know, it's probably not as big of a deal inside of Norfolk as it is in a smaller town. Because if you were to go, I'm from Pilger. So if you were to say that there was a 37-year-old woman in Pilger who was positive, you could narrow that down to like three people. So we have had to apply the same method across our health district because we couldn't just, you know, say, well, only Norfolk, we're only going to report Norfolk. So what we did is that we followed the other health districts' ideas that we would not be reporting by town. We do, however, have privacy agreements with school officials. Every school in our health district has signed an agreement, and they have one person from their health, from their school who is given access to the information by zip code, of the information that we have available to us, so that they can help make determinations within their schools as to if they can continue to operate or if they have to consider other situations. So that is the reasoning behind why we have not released by-city information.
Okay, thank you, Melanie, for that background. We have provided ample time for public discussion. I want to make sure that anyone else who wanted the chance to say something has that in focusing in on the matter before us, which is the mask requirement. It looks like there's no one else left on the queue on the phone. So the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. This has a lot of info. Okay, so my name's Kim Wiseman. I am a business owner in Nebraska. I made the decision this last week to shut down my business because of lack of clients and just people being scared. And I had to laugh when she said COVID shaming. I find there's a lot more mask shaming than COVID shaming, actually. I'm not a scientist. I don't have statistics. I know that if you look, you can find just as many people saying that masks are good as you can find people saying masks are bad. I think cases go up higher when testing is more accessible. That's just common sense. I don't know how cases going higher as Melanie was saying versus what the gentleman with the five kids is saying. He was told on the phone, by the Health Department, yes, we're counting him. She says, no, we're not. There's so many different avenues of information. To me, a mask mandate, as the lady Tony said, say I can't wear a mask. There are HIPAA laws that protect me from telling you as a business owner why I can't wear a mask. Okay, I can say that. I don't need to tell you my personal reason why, not me personally, but say it is me personally. It's really nobody's business. If I were a city council, I would be spending my time trying to get more respirators and more help from my hospitals. I would try, if you're really that concerned, spend your time in that manner to prepare for what you think is coming that is strong enough to not let people make their own decisions of how to take care of their own health. If I want to go into a store that wants me to wear a mask, I look at it as no shirt, no shoes, no service. If they want me to wear a shirt in there, I have to wear it. If they want me to wear a mask, I have to wear it. But to make it something that I have to do, just because I'm in the city limits, that's, it's, I agree with the, with, is it the high school, young man from high school? I thought he said it really well. But my main question is, how are you going to enforce the fee? So I go to Hy-Vee, and I'm not wearing my mask. What happens? Anybody? Do you know?
So I'll start with, we're, again, not reinventing the wheel here. Omaha has had a similar ordinance in place for weeks, months. Lincoln, Lancaster County, as, today as we speak, Grand Island and Hastings are considering their own mask requirement. Columbus is scheduled to tomorrow. Last week, Carney, Beatrice, and David City enacted their own mask requirements, recognizing the importance of this moment. To address your question of enforcement, we've had these discussions internally. I'd welcome our city attorney or our chief of police to address that. I think that we have talked about, nobody's going to be out there with billy clubs looking for people not wearing masks, right? This is, this is an opportunity to underscore the importance and seriousness of this moment. We have, for weeks, in conjunction with our hospital, with our business community, strongly encouraged people to do the right thing, to protect not only their own health, but the health of their neighbors and relieve the burden on our hospital system. That's not been effective enough to get these numbers under control. You saw how high we are. This is not disputable, that Madison County is one of the highest. There's a reason for that. And we're trying to take a balanced, reasoned position as community leaders as to how we help protect the health and wellbeing of our community. Is that wrong, in your view?
It's not wrong at all, I understand that. However, there are as many people who feel that way, that don't feel that way, that feel that the big news story was...
I understand, everybody has different opinions, political opinions on this. Everybody can have their own opinions, but they don't get the luxury of having their own facts.
Okay, but the facts...
And the facts on the ground here, our hospital is almost full, and our rates are among the highest in the country.
Okay, I don't know that your rates are the highest in the country.
Well, you can look.
But you can also say that the big news story this week was wearing this mask also protects me. Duh. We all know that, this is a two-way thing. So if it's a two-way thing, and the droplets are microscopic, however they're talking about it, can't they get in my eyes? Can they get in my ears? And if I itch my ear and then I, I mean, that's the thing. I'm not here to argue whether you're wearing a mask or not. I just want to know, how are you going to enforce it? Is the manager of Hy-Vee going to come over? Is the checker going to come over? And are they going to detain me? Are the police, what's going to happen? How are you going to enforce it? How is the $25 fine going to be given to me? How, what is the plan on enforcing it?
Yeah, sure.
You know, I would hope that people would be mature enough to step up and do it. I hope you have a maturity level to say, you know, this is a small thing I should do to do the right thing. It's not a big, a big thing. You're not losing any rights. You're not losing any privilege.
Okay, you...
I want to keep this at the matter at hand, and you have a legitimate question, how will it be enforced? Our chief of police, Don Miller, is here, ready to offer comment on that.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Don Miller, and the police chief for Norfolk. This is obvious, we're very well aware that this is a very contentious topic. There's a lot of people who are, agree with it, there's a lot of them that don't agree with it. And the enforcement is going to fall in the hands of the Norfolk Police Division for the city organs violations. As we've had multiple conversations about this over time, the thing that we need to understand is that we have no, our goal is not to be heavy-handed, which is one of people's concerns. Our goal would be to take a view of education and voluntary compliance. If you look at the agencies that have done this, there has not been a need to be heavy-handed. There's three parts to this ordinance. There's the mask-wearing, there's the business's requirement to enforce the mask-wearing, and their requirement to post the requirement for masks. If there's a business that is not managing their own business, then the enforcement would go to the manager or the owner of the business, whoever's present. They're going to be held accountable. Our goal is not to come in and issue tickets to everybody. That's absolutely not the case. Again, we want to take an educational role. If there is a violation, we're going to have to evaluate that, and somebody would be issued a citation like, similar to a speeding citation, and they would have a day in court, and they would have their opportunity to defend themselves in court like anything else. That is not what we want. I've already instructed my officers, you know, they have discretion based on those circumstances. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read the ordinance yet. I'm not going to share my personal opinions on this because everyone's got two different sides, but when you look at the ordinance, there are many exceptions built into this, which, once you have a chance to look at that, it may put some people at ease. As mentioned, there's exceptions for medical, there's exceptions for being outside. I mean, we want people to go outside and get fresh air. There are certain circumstances where it's not appropriate. I know one of the questions I get is for, you know, for law enforcement, there's times that we need to communicate with people where we're going to have to take our masks off to communicate effectively, or ask people to take their masks off to communicate effectively. There's a whole variety of circumstances that we're going to need to take into consideration. One of the concerns that I had was overwhelming our 911 system with phone calls. So one of the things that we've done is we're developing a separate phone line, where if you happen to call in, they're going to transfer you to a separate line that they can address your concerns and, or leave a message. And those are designed so that we don't end up taking up the time of our emergency 911 calls. This is not, in comparison to the other things that we do, this is not a high-priority incident. So when we get the information, we're going to have to evaluate on what kind of response we may employ. But the $20, $25 fine, the city doesn't get that money. And that goes to the school systems and court costs. And so when people talk about that, you know, with any tickets, the police department writes that money does not come back to the city. It's an expense for us, it's not an income item. So if there's specific questions about enforcement, I'm happy to answer those, but I want people to know this, this isn't, the intent is to get voluntary compliance and educate people along the way. With the things going on, the last thing that the community wants, the last thing we want, is to be heavy-handed. And that's one of the questions I always get, people are concerned about how heavy-handed we're going to be. That's not the goal. Doesn't mean that if people are intentionally challenging the stuff, the ordinances, we're going to have to take enforcement action, but that's not our intent.
Thank you, chief. I think that's well said, that our approach to this will be pragmatic, practical, and focused on education. I think it is interesting to note that during the time Omaha has had this in place, there's been one prosecution, or not even one?
I'm not aware of any.
And I know you've been in touch with that police division, that police department, and others around the state, and how, in terms of how best, maybe Carney's, Carney's? Yes, which is based on the same ordinance we're looking at. I think that discussion brings home maybe, maybe some more things we need to talk about in terms specifically of the ordinance and exemptions. Danny, our city attorney, mentioned some of those upfront. In the last few days, I know I've gotten questions primarily on two things, and we talked about this at the Public Health Board meeting. How does this apply in bars and restaurants? Danny, do you want to talk about that, please?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I think it was kind of alluded to earlier in comparison with how Omaha and Lincoln have had to handle it. As the exception reads under the proposed ordinance, it says that face covering will not be required if the individual is seated at a bar or restaurant to eat or drink, or while immediately consuming food or beverages. So yes, when that individual enters the restaurant or the bar, they would need to be wearing a mask, and they would wear a mask until they get seated under the ordinance, as it is written.
So basically, while you're mobile in the bar restaurant, you wear the mask when you're seated? It comes off?
Yes.
Okay. The other question in business offices, in the case where there might be somebody at the front office, manning the front office, how does this ordinance address those cases? Would a person like that need to be masked up all day?
If there's six-foot distance at all times of the day, then no. But how this, how the exceptions work in this ordinance is that obviously people that are in offices that are not continually exposed to people they wouldn't need to wear a mask, neither would people who are in cubicles that have, you know, the permanent, the structures that go between them and the person adjacent to them. If we have any situations where we have business owners that have open-air environments, maybe you have a number of people sitting in a collaborative setting without the, you know, without the cubicle, so to speak, they would need to put up a permanent plexiglass in between, otherwise they would need to wear masks all the time.
Okay. Want to allow any opportunity for council to ask questions now?
Danny, I would add, through the sense of technology today, I did receive a text earlier today. A man specifically asked me, places that aren't open to the public in his business, they're not required to wear a mask at that spot. I believe the way this is stated, and he wanted to make sure that he was accurate in that, so...
So I will point out that under this ordinance, premises that are open to the general public is very broadly defined. So I will just read that for the record, I think that's helpful. So it says, premises that are open to the general public. Premises that are open to the general public are broadly defined to include entities that employ or engage workers, including private sector entities, public sector entities, nonprofit entities, regular commercial or business establishments, private clubs, religious centers, or buildings, public transportation, including buses, taxis, ride-sharing vehicles, or vehicles used for public purposes, and any place which is generally open to the public, including educational institutions and daycare facilities. So because that is, that is very broad, that's why the six-foot is built into the exception. So is the, if you're in an office setting, then you do not have to wear a mask, and that's the same with the cubicles, or when you have the permanent plastic separation barriers.
Just because of the vagueness, I had one individual contact me asking, in their particular environment, if we could add to the list of exceptions. Individuals at their workspace in areas typically not accessible to the general public, such as private workspaces. They're asking if that could be added into the list of exceptions, and maybe you can further try to answer that for me?
That would be something that you, as the council, would need to discuss and make a decision if you wanted to amend this, to add that. I will say that, you know, it's very hard without knowing the nature of all of these businesses. You know, I mean, there's some that it will apply to, some, obviously, it won't apply to. I mean, I think the intent behind the ordinance is to protect workers. You know, obviously, I would say it's probably, it might be a hassle to wear masks, but I think the intent is to prevent businesses from closing down. So I think as it's written, there's a number of exceptions, if they're six feet away, if they're in their own office, if they're in a cubicle, or if they are in close proximity, if they can just put up either, you know, the plexiglass or the other plastic barrier... or the other plastic barriers. But to add any further exceptions, that would be a decision made by you as elected officials.
I guess my question, you feel like, well, are in the exceptions, is addressing that particular exception?
I do. You know, like I said, it is, it's hard for me to address without knowing the exact, you know, how the building is, you know, who the business is, how everybody's seated, but I would say that generally speaking, you know, if they're six, if they're six feet apart at all times of the day, if somebody, if they're in an office, or if they're in cubicles, then they should be, they should be okay to go without masks, otherwise they would need to wear masks during the day if they wanted, you know, to be in a close office proximity and not put up plexiglass.
And just to highlight what Danny's referring to there, Section 1163 references an exemption for individuals who maintain a minimum of six feet of separation, or social distance at all times, from anyone who's not a member of the individual's household. Six feet, when you, when you space it out, is actually pretty close for a workspace. I don't know, again, we don't know everyone's particular circumstances in workspaces, but I'd be surprised if there's a lot of places in Norfolk in which there are employees working anyway within six feet of each other.
So if the numbers go down before...
We have, if you have something to say, we would have to have you come forward again and sign your name.
Again, okay.
Yeah. I mean, you're registered, but yeah, we...
No, my question, my question is...
So everybody can hear you, we need to have you in front of the mic.
Okay, my question is, so like I say, if before the March deadline, the numbers are back down, and the numbers are down at the hospital, are they going to take away this ordinance?
That's a good question, very good question, and it leads to discussion of the sunset provision that's built into this ordinance. Danny, can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, that's a really good question. When we were talking about this earlier, I think consideration for that sort of situation, if you will, was really important to some of the elected officials in this room. So we did modify the sunset provision to say that it'll expire and terminate at 11:59 PM on February 16th, 2021, or earlier, as decided by the council in consultation and coordination with the medical community. So if something like that does happen, and, you know, communications with the hospital and Elkhorn Logan Valley Public Health Department, they lead us to believe that it's something that we could bring back before the council to remove sooner, I would imagine that that would be something that we would do.
As supplied, as supported by the data that would be given to us by the health organizations?
Yes, I would imagine so, that's not something I'm qualified to speak to, or to speak to the level of the data. I think it's just, that would be something that was decided in collaboration between the mayor and staff, and...
Well, I believe in our last meeting, it was, it's not an arbitrary decision for the council. The decision would be based on information that we get from Elkhorn Public Health and...
Yes, that was the, that was the decision that...
It's not the women, the council, it's what the, it's what the data is that's provided to us.
Absolutely, and that's why the, you know, the subcommittee that considered this, that was an important, an important aspect, was that we had medical feedback, you know, in case we did want to remove this sooner than that. Because I think, I think nobody's goal in this room is to keep this going continuously.
Right.
So if that data looks better than it does currently, I think that would probably be our goal.
And if it looks better January the 16th, so be it. If it's February the 16th, so be it. That's why we wanted to have it open-ended.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Yeah, and just so it's clear, and through internal discussions, we wanted to make sure that we built in that flexibility. So as it currently reads, sunset provision, February 16th, 2021, or earlier, as decided by the council in consultation and coordination with the medical community. I think you're fine, Diane, since you already said it.
So, at what point do we stop? Like, if wearing a mask is going to make you feel safer with your fellow person, then is next, the next logical step is that everybody has to get a vaccine, so that COVID never happens again? Isn't it?
No.
I mean, like, where does it ever stop? I just still think that it needs to be a person's own personal responsibility. I don't think that it's a good thing for the government to make that decision. And I, I just, wisdom looks down the road and sees what's coming. And I just don't think that this is a good decision. And I don't think that it's a good decision that people are calling because somebody didn't wear a mask in a restaurant, or somebody didn't wear a mask in a grocery store. I just, I plead with you, just because other people have done it, doesn't mean that we have to do it. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel, regarding the provision? We're, okay. We're getting to the point where, if you've already spoken, we want everybody, I know you haven't, but we're going to, we're going to start focusing this on the decision that the council needs to make. So if you've not had a chance to speak, and you still want to speak, that's fine, but we're going to limit it now to people who have not spoken, to this point.
Come here with a real heavy heart today, because never would have thought that we'd ever come to this point in a country that's supposed to be full of freedom and liberty. Where do our freedoms and liberties start and stop with this? Sounds like it's already a done deal. I know you guys are going to vote on it, but we, the people, do not get to vote on it. We voted for you. I voted for you, I voted for you. I believed we were making good choices. Now I'm questioning whether or not the city has made a good choice, if we go through with this. And I would stand behind freedom and liberty before I would stand behind the city council passing this. I'd just like you all to think about our constitution, and what we, the people, should have the right to do. We should not be told by our government, we put our government in place to represent us. And I hope that you guys would represent the whole of Norfolk, and not just your individual thoughts and beliefs.
Sir, if I could, if I could address that a moment, please? Yes, we are elected by the public, and we take an oath of office to do what we think is best for the constituents that we were elected by. I think all of us here have had plenty of input from either our particular ward constituents or other people in the city to, to kind of make a determination of what the majority is asking us to do. Point one. Next point would be in terms of your liberties and your freedoms. If we were looking at a mask mandate in perpetuity, then I certainly would stand right behind you and say, that's not government's job.
No, I don't see the difference, so that's where I stand.
Well, here's what I...
Between one day...
If you would allow me, if you would allow me, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
A mask mandate in perpetuity, I would not be in favor of, because I don't believe that that is something, I believe that would be a liberty taken away. If we're looking at something over the course of the next 60 days that may have a benefit on the health of the community as a whole, then I don't believe that's an infringement upon my liberties. I believe that's my responsibility as a citizen to help us have a more healthy community, based on the input we're getting from our medical community.
And I agree with you in part, but in part, where the, you could walk into a building with your mask on, and as soon as you sit down, you can't catch COVID, so off with the mask, where's COVID now? Where did it go?
Well, you're...
Because I'm drinking a glass of wine, or eating a steak, the COVID's not going to attack me? Or if I have COVID, annoyingly, I wouldn't go out with it, wouldn't want to share it with anyone?
Certainly.
Here I am in the room with the other people. Are they going to get it? Who knows?
Well, we're six feet apart, so I guess we don't have to worry about that right now?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, can you state your name for the record, please? Can you state your name for the record, please?
Patrick Donaldson.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Okay. Your question, but you have to come forward, please.
Thank you. So what exactly is it, then? Because that, you walk into a restaurant with a mask, and then you take it off. Do you walk into the grocery store with a mask, and you take it off, or you keep it on the, I mean, what exactly are we supposed to do?
Can we, the attorney, clarify, please?
Do we, I mean, and there could be a lot of things.
We've talked about this, but Danny, can you, can, can you adjust that again?
Yes, thank you for your question. There's a difference when you're, obviously, eating and drinking is certainly something where a mask would conflict with the ability to eat and drink. So that's why there's a special exemption built into this mandate, as is built into the mandates of our sister communities, as well as Omaha and Lincoln. So that's, that's a special one. Now, when you go into a grocery store or another retailer, the expectation would be to keep on your mask for the entirety of that visit, unless, you know, it happened to be a Hy-Vee that had a bar, and you were sitting at the bar. So unless, you know, you're eating or drinking, within that establishment, your mask would be expected to be on at all times, unless you fit in with one of the exceptions, you know, namely, in this situation, I would think the medical exemption, which is present within this ordinance.
Any other questions or discussion, counsel, on the ordinance itself?
The state health code say that, like, a restaurant, the table has to be so far apart?
Yes, that, that has already been dealt with by the state, yes.
Spilled out and directed health measures, yes. Do you have a question, John, or we've heard, we've heard from you?
I do appreciate that, I did have just one very brief question, I'm sorry to interrupt like this. It was, it was what Shane had brought up, kind of, and I wanted to put a point. I think some people in here, I'll keep it very brief, have kind of said, well, maybe things, we're doing this, we're taking away a liberty, if you want to see that as to protect the public. I understand that point of view, even if I don't agree with it 100%, but what he brought up about private business, I think, is very telling. And I think that it also goes into how much we actually are to say, in a private business, say...
John, is there a, is there a question here, please?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
That me and my brother, we work together, we don't live in the same household, that we would be forced by law, if we were to be in compliance, to have to wear masks if we were working together, and to say that, that, that that's okay. The only higher level of intrusion, the only higher level of intrusion that we could take was to say that in your household, you then have to wear masks. And so the question that I had, then, would be for the city attorney's office. It said that there's household exemptions, I believe, but is there, is there other exemptions for the private business? And even if I don't agree with the ordinance as an entirety, the amendment or the extra wording that Mr. Clausen had brought in, I think is very good. Thank you. Oh, and doctors used to say that it was okay to smoke, too, so...
And I would just answer, just to clarify, under the definition of premises that are open to the general public, if Mr. Hobbs and his brother were working together, and they weren't employing workers, that would not count as premises that are open to the general public, so they would not be forced to comply with this mask mandate. As I did say, it's really hard to, you know, spell out, you know, specific regulations for businesses without knowing the nature of those businesses, but I encourage anybody that is listening today that is concerned or confused to call my office, and I'm happy to walk through, you know, their layout with them, and just kind of help them get through this ordinance, so that they have a good understanding of what would be required, or maybe not required, by them, you know, under this mask mandate.
Thank you, Danny. Okay. Any other questions, counsel, on the ordinance? Yes, sir?
Okay, my name's Steve Justin. And, let's see. Start with first, I, I am not convinced, at this point, that mask mandate is going to solve our problem. And the reason I say that is this. I have two incidences that I can show you where masks have not worked, and even quarantining has not worked. We got, I, my parents are currently in an assisted-living facility. They've been in an assisted-living facility since the first of this year. They have been in lockdown several times, as you well know, as the colors have changed. This last round of lockdowns in their facility has made it so that I have been unable to visit or see my parents personally, to even see if they're being cared for, all right? This has been going on since we went and turned to red again, all right? My father has chronic, he's COPD, he is actually probably in his final days of living, and I am still unable to see my father because of a lockdown for something that is unstoppable. If you all think you're going to stop this thing, you're all mistaking sadly. I received a phone call on Friday, my parents, my dad had to go get an injection in his eyes, he's got emacular degeneration, besides COPD, besides heart conditions, all of the critical things that, and he's 83 years old also, I might add, and my mom's 82, and she's got dementia, and she's in there with him. And I'm telling you, I get a phone call on Friday telling me that my mother has COVID, and my father tested negative for COVID. He left the facility four weeks ago to go get injections in his eye, he's been under quarantine ever since. They don't even let him out of their room. So you tell, and I know this facility is following everything that you all are presenting here to stop them from getting COVID, and I thank God for that. But I'm telling you, you're not stopping it. It's not going to stop. And those graphs that you showed up here, the people from the health department and that stuff, I didn't see where anything went down, it's always been going up. Even at the times when the masks and the shutdown happened. We didn't drop it, we leveled it, but it, I mean, I'm just saying, what are we thinking here? I'm not no scientist, or doctor, or anything, but I have friends that are. And they, if you really talk to the doctors, and the people that really do care, I feel, they'll tell you the same thing, every one of these masks are doing no good. They're not stopping, they may slow, but they're not going to stop the virus. And I just cannot believe that we can honestly, as Christian people, force people, my, if my dad dies in that facility, I'm telling you. I hope this never happens to any of you, and I just want you to consider this. By doing this mandate, you are instilling fear in the public, again. This is fear mongering, is what it is. And I am telling you, you can, I don't care, all the statistics, I have not seen one thing that you have showed me today where this mask mandate is going to stop anything. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Justin. Counsel, any further questions or discussion among the counsel on the ordinance?
So, number one, a...
State your name again, please.
Cash, Cash Lure. And so, a point about constituent input was brought up, so has there been any public polling conducted to see, like, what the support would be for a mandate of this caliber?
No.
No.
So there's been no public polling done, okay. And then, number two... And then, number two, oh, we were talking about public places. Isn't there a separation of church and state? Like, shouldn't mask wearing be up to individual church dioceses and church boards to decide with the separation of church and state by the Constitution?
Separation of church and state was designed to, churches wouldn't mandate law. Law wouldn't mandate.
The ordinance applies to any indoor setting where it's accessible to the public.
Yeah, that was a legitimate question. I was not sure on that one.
Okay.
I've said my piece. Thank you, everyone.
I have one question here on the exemptions. As far as a business, place of business, this has been brought to my attention too. If they lock their door and don't allow the public in, would they be exempt?
I would, I would say no, because if you read the definition, it says that premises that are open to the general public are broadly defined to include entities that employ or engage workers, including private sector entities. So I, I would read that to believe that if they're in the business, and if they're in a business and they have people employed, they would still be required to follow the mask mandate.
So that would refer me back to the one I brought up earlier. This is a clarification of workspace, working in workspace. This is what the concern we're receiving from some of the people in the business community.
Okay, to conclude the public input session, I do want to make note that the council did receive statements, both for and against via email and letter. And I'll just read those, some of those people asked that those communications be noted for the record. So we did receive in support of the mask requirement ordinance, letters from UNMC, University of Nebraska Medical Center, also Tammy Day, citizen of Norfolk, the Nebraska Medical Association, Dr. Leah Barrett of Northeast Community College, Citizen Libby McKay, Mary Flack, and Robin Hess, all in support of the mask requirement. And against, we received communications from citizens Lenell Cum, Kyle Cleveland, Diane Price, Andrea Hoffman, and Nita Erickson. So with that, I would ask the council to bring forth any other comments or questions on the ordinance itself before we make a decision.
My, one thing I'd like to bring forward, you know, Robbie brought it up. The sunset clause is extremely important to many of the council, simply because we didn't want this to be ongoing. As far as the sunset clause goes, or if there's an opportunity to, you know, take side against this mandate, we have to have a benchmark. I don't think we've established that benchmark. I just like to know, moving forward, how that benchmark is going to be established? Because the only thing I heard today was the only way that's going to, there will be a benchmark. The benchmark is a vaccine. That's what was stated when we were listening to, Melanie?
Melanie.
Melanie, yes. And so that's, I hadn't heard that yet, but. So what, how are we going to establish some sort of benchmark? Will it be capacity rates at the hospital? I'm, I'm assuming would be a major, major thing there, what capacity rate that is. You know, where the hospital is comfortable. I don't want to get to a point where we, we get to February and we're all sitting here again going, you know, we're at 55%. We were at 90%. We'd rather be at 35%. So we need, you know, I just would like to get, either we, we start working on that, because I know that, that's a, it's a moving target, I get it. But to be fair to everybody out here, I think that's something we're going to have to really work towards.
I think Shane, that's why it was important to build in that provision that this could sunset earlier than that February 16th date in consultation with our medical community. So you're right, no necessary benchmarks were put in place there. I think, I, we wanted to try to make clear today that I think all of us want to take a pretty pragmatic, practical, practical approach. I don't think anybody wants to be here discussing this, right?
No.
Nobody wants to be in this situation environment at all. But one of the first rules in an emergency medical situation is to stop the bleeding, help stop the bleeding. And I think a measure like this is one way that we can all, together, help stop the bleeding and lighten the load on our friends and neighbors in the healthcare community. So I don't see this body of individuals, this group of individuals, being really rigid in a, in a formula needed to say that our hospital capacity now is enough where we can manage a public health crisis. I think we're all pretty reasonable, pragmatic individuals, and will trust the data we're receiving from our healthcare system in terms of when can we, when can we get back to a place where this is under control? Because it's not under control right now.
Mr. Mayor, the, I, I agree. And Shane, to your point, the data got us here. And it's my view that the data gets us out of here. But we do need to identify what that data is going to be. And I think, as I mentioned earlier, that's going to come from the healthcare professionals in our community that, that, that drive our community. So it is incumbent upon us as a council to work with those people quickly to determine what that is going to be. But it, it does have to be based on, on that medical data, whether it's the dial at Elkhorn Valley or whether it's the hospital availability. We'll just have to wait and, and see what's brought to us.
The only part about it is the wait and see part. I kind of like, I just want to continue this conversation moving forward, that we, we try to dial in sooner than later.
Absolutely. I don't want to wait and see.
Yeah.
I want to, I want to be proactive on it, and I want to get those, I want to, I want to get that in place so that we can definitively say we are, we, we should be out of here, we should not be out of here, one of the two. So we can't just walk away today and, and say, "Well, let's see what we come up with." We have to be, we have to be very proactive in going after, with the help of the health department, going after what, what data we need to look at.
And I would note too that we're in regular communications with our hospital system and public health as to where we are. And that, that won't change. If anything, it'll only increase.
Your honor, I've got just a couple of comments. Is that okay? You know, we've had a, it's okay, I'm going to take this off, because I don't project very well. We, we've had a lot of information from both sides since this got out onto the public and the media like it should. And I just want to speak for myself and how I plan on voting. You know, I, I appreciate liberty. I'm a, probably a big believer in that. I served my country on a foreign soil to defend that right. The young men that spoke today and as companion, I know who they are, very articulate young men. And the citizens that spoke, lots of information. Ms. Thompson, I've known her for a long time, very good information. And we can all argue over, we'll never stop it, or will we stop it? But at the end of the day, what stood out for me was the comments I got from members that work at the hospital or their family members that I've received information from. And at the end of the day, if we would have a major catastrophe in this community, which we don't want, they may not be equipped to handle it because their beds are full of folks that have to be quarantined. Historically, yes, this is not as bad as everybody talks about the Spanish flu over 100 years ago nationwide. But for our community and for our healthcare providers, you know, I'm going to support this because it does have a, I don't know what we call it, an expiring date. And I would agree with Councilman Merrill, if it didn't have an expiring date, no way, no way. We can't do that. So that's my thoughts on that and to my constituents. And like I said, I am, I'm the junior councilman here. When I ran, I told a lot of people I talked to that you may not always like what I do, but I have to think of the greater city and what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions? We're, we're going to move on to the vote. We've had, we've had plenty of discussion and a time for exchange of opinions and ideas and questions. So we're going to move on to a vote. If there's any questions or comments from the council, can do that.
Just going back to what I stated earlier about the adding that exemption to the clause, is that something I just need to, I've been asked, so I need to put it out there? Is that something we feel we want to do? Do we feel like it needs to be done? Or I, you know, we've got a, it's legit, it's a legit ask. I just need some direction. Not the, I'm not talking about the sunset clause. I'm talking about exemptions within businesses.
I.
That I read previously.
Yeah. And I would just ask more about that. Is there a lot of concern that there are workplaces in which six feet of distance can't be maintained consistently?
Don't have all that information from who's asking.
Because if that.
Yeah. My, my assumption is they're worried that they won't be adequately, be able to perform their duty and their job, and it might hinder how, how their operations work day to day. That'd be what I'm assuming.
I believe there's an exemption in there, Shane, for exactly that.
That's, that's the information we've got to get out there and make public, because if not, you know.
Any other comments on that or questions?
Well, to, to, to address what Councilman Clausen brought up, I think if we find that there does need to be a fine tune there, we can certainly do that. But to go back to the mayor's analogy of stopping the bleeding, let's do that. And then if we do need to make a small change to it, that change will be made by the same body that came up with this ordinance. So I think we can keep that option open for ourselves. I do know of businesses in town that I work with where they're not able to keep that, that six feet of social distancing, but they do require their employees to wear a mask from the beginning of the shift to the end of the shift. So I think there's, there's lots of folks out there that are addressing this already, but we can certainly, we can certainly benefit from further communication.
Now, Rob, I, I think what you said was well spoken. And I think the thing that we need to remember is that, all in all, this is an ordinance. It's like any other ordinance that we have out there. We have parking sign ordinances. We add or subtract from them all the time along. This doesn't require a benchmark. It requires input from this body and from staff. And to think that we're recreating the wheel by having to have benchmarks in here is a fallacy. That's, that's why you were elected to handle those things and bring them on forward. So again, it's no different than any other ordinance that we have on the books.
I think you kind of misunderstood what I said, Jim.
I actually was in the restroom.
But you know what, when I'm talking about benchmark, I'm talking about where we get to when we say, "You know what, this sunset, let's go away." Where we get, I just want to have those discussions before we get to that point. So when we get into February, we're not sitting here going, you know, we're not, well, I disagree with you on that, you disagree with me on that. I would like to get to a point where we kind of, everybody's kind of in agreement that when the hospital gets to, say, 50%, or, you know, we, we are able, like Fred said, if we have a catastrophe or whatnot, we're able to put people in beds and we're okay there. Is that the point that we, you know, lift the ordinance? That's, that's all I'm getting at. I'm not saying you have to say, you know, this is exactly where we're starting to stop it. I'm just trying to say, it'd be nice to have something that we can relate to so we can hang our hat on and say, "Now it's time to..." And if we don't do that, let's think, you get to February and all of a sudden we're sitting in the same boat, having the same meeting, having the same discussion, and we're kicking the can down the road. You know, so we just kind of, unfortunately, it sounds to me like the only way it changes is with a vaccine. Could be wrong.
And that we hope reduce the spread, which is currently rampant right now.
Yeah.
Which is why we're here talking.
Then in fact, that's, you know, before this meeting, you know, I was very anti-mask. And I did some research on my own, had an opportunity to talk with Josh. Josh has been educating himself now for quite a while about this, and then his hearing from our medical staff and whatnot. I think there was two things that got to me. Otherwise, you know, I, I respect everybody's opinion and, and the fact that I did feel like this was stepping on my liberties as a citizen by having forced me to wear a mask. First thing that came that we talked about was the capacity of the hospitals. Obviously, that is a big factor in, on my, on what, how I would have to vote on this because, number one, I've got a family member that can't afford to get COVID. And if she did, would she have an opportunity to get to the hospital? Because we're operating at 100% capacity. So that was one major thing that just kind of changed, you know, for me, just hearing that sort of information. And that, that's almost really the gist of it. It's who we can take care of and who we can't take care of. And if, one gentleman was up here speaking earlier, said masks don't work, but they may slow things down. I mean, I get where you're coming from. But if it does slow it down a little bit, and we go from that 163 per 100,000 to 100 per 100,000, like Douglas County has, maybe that's just the, maybe the mask did that, and maybe that gets us down in our capacity, where we're, we're able to, you know, take people in and not be at fear that we're over, you know, overtaxing our hospitals. So that's the, if you don't look at that, I mean, that's, that's a major reason that we're asked, we were being asked to vote on this. And so with that being said, that's kind of where, kind of have to hang your hat. And so if you, if you can't make it, you know, and so that's what pushed me, I guess, is what I'm saying, to get where I would feel like I'm okay voting on this. Again, like you said, Rob, it does have a sunset clause. That was a major deal within this deal, because like, and I get the time spent on the sunset clause just from a meeting today. What they're telling us is, you know, how things test today, or how we're sitting today, we really don't know how the tests are coming out for another 30 days, or 14 to 30 days. So just because you're wearing a mask today, this could spike, still continue to spike for another 15 to 20 days, right? And then what, with the mask mandate, we're not really going to know about that for another 35 days to see if it worked at all anyway. So that puts you out a few months to see how things are going. So I'm imagining if the mask mandate does work, we should see some tics happening after December and in January is where you're going to start seeing it go down. It won't, it's going to continue to go like this for a while, because people are sick. You know, you have that 14-day period, right? And so hopefully, we get into that January and February, we start seeing what was enacted by this vote. Not saying it's going to pass today, but by this vote, where that would put us in the, in the January. And that's where we're getting to the point of where are we going to be? What numbers are we going to reflect on to make a decision to remove this? And if it comes sooner, like in January, like you guys have been saying, this can be lifted because it is an ordinance.
Right. Yeah. And I think that's a good way to bring it home. I respect those concerns and opinions, Shane. But yeah, that first thing we have to look at is hospital capacity and where we're at right now. And none of this, again, we've not entered into this lightly. It is an extraordinary circumstance. We're trying to be data-driven based on hospital capacity and the high number of rate transmissions right now. And so that is why we're here. And I, I just want to add this. I think when the pastor said, "It's important to remember the admonition to love our neighbors as ourselves," this is a really important time to think hard about that. And I know that we all value here the sanctity of life, and I think that factors into this equation as well. So with that, any other comments or questions from the council before we move to a vote? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Oh, short title, I'm sorry.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to enact Chapter 11, Article 4 of the official city code entitled Prevention of COVID-19, provide legislative findings and intent to require individuals to wear facial coverings and exemptions thereof, provide for the enforcement of violations and penalties, to establish a sunset provision to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. Now, roll call, please.
Langy?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Webo House?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Clausen?
Yes.
File?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5707 carries on first reading.
Your honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass this on second and third reading due to the previous vote that way and also due to the input that we've received.
Second?
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no discussion, roll call, please.
Langy?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Webo House?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Clausen?
Yes.
File?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5707 carries on second and third.
That concludes this special meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.